I think we left off after Wall Street law, is that correct? So the next one is public safety building improvements construction. So based on the design that we would be doing, you know theoretically in 2025, 26, we would be looking at a number of improvements that would be needed at the public safety building, some of which we've already identified, but we want to try to prioritize them, see what else is needed and really determine exactly what our end goal is before we do something that, you know, might need to be undone. You know, some of the examples of things we've already identified, fire department turnout here, extraction room, fire alarm installation, computer cabling upgrade, repaving the parking lot in the back. You know, ultimately what's, what's identified as the scope of work can be done in one large project. It could be done in phases depending on what it is we're, we're doing. So that's all kind of TBD, but we wanted a placeholder on there and that's why start year 26 and finish year 29, 29. That's all really theoretical at this point. Next, we've got, so these grayed out areas, you start seeing those as we get further down in the years where we're, you know, in this case, we're showing street improvements, $500,000 from the CHIPS POP Haven Y, you know, that those DOT sources, those are not specific streets that are identified at this time, they'll be prioritized as we get closer to that time. Next one, Silver Creek Culvert under Ford Avenue rehabilitation, similar to the Main Street one. This is on Ford Ave by the YMCA that needs some work as well. If we're, if this bridge N Y program is, is the source that we're, we're looking to, to fund a big portion of these projects and we're going to look to do one at a time and try to maximize, you know, funding assistance from the state if we can. So we're showing 26 to 28, so that timeframe potentially. Chestnut Street improvements, the next one.
Sweet.
Sorry?
I said, sorry, I said it was sweet, but it was meant to be my, to myself.
It's okay. We showed this one on there, you know, we, we had done a study of traffic calming that may be done in the area of Nick Steiner at North Fond Ave. The recommendation was installing a raised crosswalk, that would make sense to do that at the time you're doing a rehabilitation of the pavement. This is a project that would, as of today, looking ahead at, at the funding that's available through the state program and assuming that we're not, you know, dedicating a significant amount of funding from the city budget each year for the next several years towards street improvements, you know, relying on that state funding, we're going to have to spread things out and, and just make sure that we have enough available. So this is likely something that would be phased over a couple of years to do the entire length of Chestnut Street. Last one on this page, again, it's grayed out, sanitary sewer collection system improvements, $75,000, you know, to be determined exactly what that is. Page four, sewer treatment, secondary digester cleaning. It's a placeholder that, you know, can be done when it needs to be done. You know, it might need to be done every five years, sometimes you can go a little bit longer than that. So we have that on there as a placeholder. Next one, another grayed out one, water distribution improvements in order to the other streets and sewer, just rehabilitating, replacing various water main valves, hydrants. We've got $100,000 for a project such as a Long Ave project or whatever it may be that is the priority at that time. We're also showing a water supply improvements project at lower, lower reservoir. There's a bypass pit, so at the head of the reservoir, where, where we're able to bypass the reservoir if we need to drain it for some reason, dredging or, or otherwise, we would like to do some improvements there to make that fully functional. Next one, enterprise fund, public transit, looking ahead. This is again, it's a placeholder, a lot of this stuff, when you get out more than really a year or two, a lot of this stuff can move around as we go forward in time. But we're looking at, you know, future need, especially if we were to partner with the county and operating their bus system, we would want to do an evaluation of our facility, both the bus garage and the maintenance facility, looking ahead toward potential electric buses and having to charge those and improvements to our facility. So there'd be a feasibility study, environmental review, that sort of thing as a first step to see what, what it is we're, you know, looking to do. The next four are airport projects. Carrie, do you want to jump in on any of these? We've got the, really this is, she already kind of talked about this, off airport obstruction clearing design, phase two of these in acquisition, so it's kind of the same thing she already explained. Same thing with the entrance road relocation. The next one, I won't even bother making you talk about it, it's just rehabilitating the asphalt runway, very straightforward.
Yep, and that's based on pavement management, so they'll take a look at it, they'll decide if it needs to be done, that may not even have to be done. So they'll do an evaluation, they do a pavement management program, determine what needs to be done and go from there. So that may not have to happen, it is, it may have to happen.
Just like our, our streets, I mean, you give an evaluation and, and do the right treatment at the right time. Next, we have Wilbur Park Pool Parking Lot paving. Chris has talked about this at one of our committee meetings, I think, click earlier this year. This is something that we'd like to do, we've pushed out a couple of years just looking at available funding and, and other priorities, but it's something we want to keep on the list. We also have next, the Greenway Trail New Island Bridge replacement. The Susquehanna Greenway Commission is very interested, as is FOF, in continuing to improve our trail system, they'd like to replace the old Trestle Bridge that is on New Island that is not usable at this point. They would be looking to raise funds for this, is my understanding. We also, through the LWRP, Local Waterfront Rehabilitation Plan, would be eligible for grant funding for, for projects such as this. So this is one that by the time we have that plan in place, it would be something we would look to utilize state grant funding for, if possible.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I'm not sure where this is, you, you don't have to cross a bridge to get onto New Island?
There's a bridge on New Island, you don't have to cross the bridge to get there, you want to the underpass and then go down in there. And then if you keep going along, there's an old railroad bridge that crosses a section of water.
Oh, right, I didn't know that was a railroad bridge.
Oh, you, yeah, used to be, yeah. And it's, it's, it's not something that we can allow people to use, it's on DOT property now, they, they require us to close it. So we have a workaround, a walk around, you can walk around on the ground.
I walked around it, yeah. Okay, I, I didn't know where it was.
The Greenway Committee, Commission and the Committee and FOF, I mean, they have big, big goals of extending trail system all the way to connect to Fortin Park, so it's, this would be a piece of.
Replacing the bridge would be $720,000?
Yes, in 2027, 28, based on a high level COF estimate we have now, yes.
It's basically a footbridge.
Yeah, technically.
That seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, Christine, why?
As comparison, the Wilbur Lake Bridge, which is only a third of the size, it costs $200,000 roughly?
Hundred fifty, two hundred maybe, yeah. And this is again, you know, there's a inflation factor assumption that's put in here, so you're looking at a 2028 project, so it's driven up a little bit too. And, you know, there's other considerations, there's work that's associated with the bridge itself.
Well, so if I may just offer the possible solution, please correct me if I'm inaccurate, but it seems like with public works projects, you have such use, high usage in terms of public volume, that these projects require robust materials and they really need to withstand, like that it's not like a home improvement project where you have, you know, a family or, you know, a small population using the object. So I think that's, you know, I was thinking about this in relation to the stage as well.
To your point, to your point, I just want to say, I'm up at Wilbur Lake all the time and I don't think that that bridge has seen, the amount of use it's seeing right now and this, these last several months as, and I've been probably visiting that for 40 years. Yeah, and they love it, it's a beautiful bridge and will be there for the next, you know, 100 years, maybe, maybe, but it's a great bridge.
State prevailing wage is a great thing.
I was going to say, at some point I'll talk about the wonderful thing called the Davis Bacon Act, which requires all public projects to pay union scale for absolutely every job that's done and who keeps working and essentially doubles the cost of all public works projects mandated by federal law. If you use one, if you use city money or state money, public money of any kind, all, all the bidding has to be at union scale wages is set by the New York State Department of Labor as opposed to putting out a bid to a private contractor and all private contractors have to pay and be certified paywage, pay scales and payrolls that are certified by the New York State Department of Labor.
Thank you.
So you write that's expensive.
Yep. Moving on. Moving on, again, I'm not going to, I'm going to skip over the, the street improvements, those are just placeholders for, any of the amounts that are shown in there are based on what we're projecting may be available through the state programs, those are all assumptions and obviously the state budget goes year by year as well. Glenwood Creek Culvert under Susquehanna Avenue, that is on Susquehanna Ave, Glenwood Creek Culvert goes underneath it. It says Silver Creek and I did, must be copy and, copy and paste there in the description, sorry about that. But this is another culvert that needs to be replaced at some point. Next, sanitary sewer collection system, INI reduction. So based on the results of the study that we talked about earlier, we would look to likely apply for the same type of funding, source of funding that we use for the wastewater plant upgrades. You can apply for certain funding programs to do INI improvements if you're, you know, if something that's impacted by your permit. So now that we have that permit requirement, it's something we might be competitive in applying for funding to do these types of improvements. These are lining sewer mains, replacing them perhaps, you know, improving manholes, anything that reduces inflow and infiltration. So I'm showing a placeholder of $500,000 just knowing that there's going to be a local match associated with that grant funding, whatever amount it is. So we're kind of planning for that. Water distribution, more miscellaneous replacements. We do have a couple treatment plant projects that are not in the current upgrade that are smaller amounts that could be done in the annual budget in the future. Security doors and cameras improvements as well as the pump house roof replacement. A few more airport projects, if we were to be successful in our desire to do the airport partial parallel taxiway phase one, there'd be a phase two, should be over half of it. Phase one starts at the one end of the runway and does about half of it and it does not impact our existing hangars. If we did phase two, based on just the layout and the grading of things, by installing that parallel taxiway, it would cut off our existing airplane hangars from the runway, they would be unable to access, they'd be unusable for airplane storage anymore unless they were a museum. So they could potentially be repurposed for something else, but the reason we're phasing it in this order is to hopefully allow an opportunity, if there's a private investor wants to build the hangars.
Or an ultimate funding source to build additional hangars on the first phase so that we can avoid lost revenue.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is this table in an Excel spreadsheet somewhere? Could that be shared?
It could, I, I'll just modify it because there's a million other lines of old projects and other things that are.
Oh, I would love to, but okay.
It just might be.
But yeah, you may want to.
But, but yeah, I can, I can.
But yeah, I would love a table that's sortable because I'm just looking at, you know, a lot of these things, because it's sorted by date, a lot of these things, I think it would be helpful to see like how much we're looking to put into general airport projects over the next five years.
That, I'll send you the Excel sheet too, but I will also summarize and have the little table that just shows general airport by year summary, I didn't have time to finish that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah, but you'll see that in last year's or this year's budget.
Okay, okay, great.
And then we already talked about the off airport obstruction clearing, you know, construction, really removal of trees as well as design at the next phase, flipping to page five, Roman's there. The airport electrical vault is the last airport product, no, not the last one, is an airport project that's identified on the plan. That one I don't know a whole lot about other than it's self-explanatory and I think that's something we have to discuss further with our consultant, it's still for out there, we haven't really gotten into that. We have a separate five-year capital plan just for the airport, we have to submit an update every year and submit to the FAA, so that's why we have these projects on here that, you know, they're, they're duplicating from, from that. Eagle Park Skate Park and Pump Track, detailed design and construction, as we've heard from Max when he presented and what was funded, is just a conceptual design, there, there will be a detailed design and construction costs, it will be much higher depending on what they decide they want to do. They've indicated their desire to raise funds for this, that's why the TBD is shown under grant other TBD private funding.
Are we thinking that it might be as late as 2028 or is this just basically a placeholder?
I mean, Chris, jump in if you want, but from our discussions, from what I heard with Max, like he, he and the group understand that this is going to be a multi-year process to raise funding for this and they're willing to wait if it's a few years to get the best project, so I.
So it might be as much as three years before they really begin construction?
I, I've prepared them for five to 10 years.
Okay.
Depending on who they know, it could be next year, you know, that's really up to them if they're, you know, they've committed to coming forward with all the funding, but we just have a placeholder.
Get the idea what we want, get it in the designs, we can start getting construction estimates, know what we're really going to search for in the funding.
Right. There may be grant opportunities, you know, that we haven't identified yet that we can apply for to help this or that they could apply for.
So the bottom line is that there's likely to be some flexibility, maybe five to 10 years and maybe three, four years, maybe sooner than that, all depending on their plans and their funding. Okay, thank you.
Next, we just got a few more gray lines, you know, placeholders for wastewater, water and water facilities improvements. The next airport project is the completion of the off airport obstruction clearing and then the last airport one is actual rehabilitation of the runway. The, the first instance of that was designed, this is for construction. Wilbur Park paving lower pathways, we have existing pathway, pathways that have deteriorating asphalt at some point will need to be overlaid, so we have a placeholder on here for that. They get a lot of use, I walk through there and, and you never, you never walk through there and not see someone else, they're also used for, for students going to school at OHS. And then the last several are, are placeholders again for street improvements, sanitary water improvements. You, you would notice the water improvements and wastewater improvements in particular, the amounts that I'm assuming right now we're going to be able to spend on those increase incrementally each year in hopes that our, our fund balance, our ability to fund those projects continues to strengthen through our steady, flow and steady rate increases that we're. That is it, thank you.
All right. I agree, Chris.
We can obviously talk more about this anytime.
Don?
Do you want me to introduce this, this?
We're going to get into the budget, Don?
Okay, so it's after the budget?
I'm sorry.
So what I'm, what I'm asking is, do you want me to introduce this motion now or after we discuss the budget?
No, we'll be getting into the budget, Don, and then that's what it's appropriate to.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we, you know, clear up motion 16?
Yeah, and motion 16. Yeah, yeah, okay, that's, that's this, true. Yeah, so I've got a motion that I'll read and we'll see if we can get a couple of folks to jump on it. A motion that the common council authorized the city administrator to enter into an intermunicipal agreement, subject to review by the city attorney with the village of Cooperstown for the purchase of the Simon duplex 100-foot ladder tower at a cost of $40,000 and further authorizes the waiver of the purchasing policy procurement requirement for the quoted repairs in the amount of $70,000 to be performed by JTB Fire Services Incorporated due to their detailed knowledge of the required repairs and inspection of the truck and further authorizes $110,000 to be funded via the Public Safety Reserve and further authorizes all necessary budget amendments and transfers. Do I have a motion to approve? Len followed by Alain and we can have some discussion on this? Or we can bill?
Councilmember Moser Cantoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall Streetstone?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeel?
Aye.
Councilmember LaParche?
Aye.
Councilmember Person?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry? Sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes. All right, thank you very much on that. And then that takes us to our last motion, that the common council approves the 2025 tentative budget as presented for a public hearing to be held at a special meeting of the common council to be scheduled. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought it was at the next meeting.
Tentative is tonight.
We just got it on Sunday. I mean, did anybody look at this?
I understand, charter says you have to pass the tentative budget tonight. If you don't, then you're, then you're going to be out of sync. If you'd like to take a look at it, you can look at it on your computers, but the tentative budget happens tonight. You can amend it, you can do whatever you want to it, but, and the budget gets passed tonight.
Would it be helpful if we, maybe Ginny can just go through the changes that were discussed and directed, like roughly directed by the council?
It's not nearly on time.
Let me get to the motion and get, I said to discussion, does that make sense?
No, because then we have to either vote on it or not, and I think we should talk about it first. I mean, I'm sorry, that.
No, so David, I, maybe I need some direction to get into this discussion on this prior to the motion being.
You know, when all else fails, read the statute. You, you have your, you guys have your charters?
Sure.
The C 30.
I think it's 44, 45.
Was it 40 preparation?
Forty-four.
I could envision that's, we need a tentative budget through to a year, the first meeting in November, the special meeting, the second meeting in November, the common council, I see the majority vote, revise any budget lines.
Wait, but we didn't review it at a meeting. We didn't review it at any meeting in November, we received it on Sunday.
Because there was ongoing discussion about the draft budget and based on last week's discussion, which was still discussing the draft, there was direction to include the five-point, whatever it was, percent tax increase, the, Ginny helped me out, the 85, whatever, thousand dollar.
That's fine.
Continue to the adjustment?
All of that being what it may, it says that we should review it at a meeting in November, at our first meeting or a special meeting, we didn't hold a special meeting. Now we're to the spe- second regular meeting, but we have not talked about this, we've had it for less than 48 hours.
Can we schedule for a special meeting?
I, I don't, I mean, yeah, I would, I would say probably, but like, we'll be off schedule, but I just think that like, ah, like that wasn't even on the, is that on the agenda?
Yeah, it was on the timeline that we, we distributed, but I understand that the draft discussion took longer than that.
It was on the timeline, but November 1st to have the tentative budget was on the timeline.
Correct, and obviously the council discussion took longer than that, so we're just, we're at where we're at in the process. I understand that you just received the budget. I just want to make the point that what's in the tentative budget is what's in the draft budget with the few things that we discussed. So there's not, you know, new information or new requests, you know, in numbers that are changed other than what was discussed last week. It's in a format that looks like the, the adopted budget.
I mean, from my perspective, that's fine, we don't have to talk about it. Why wouldn't we do that?
No, but if I may.
Yes.
Just, is there a possibility for having another special meeting, just to discuss this? Just to, just to have chance?
We're discussing now and then.
Or more clearly to have a chance to look, to make suggestions and then have a, a discussion at a, at a slightly later date.
But the later date would have to be this week and I, there's just no way I can be here at any other.
I don't think I can be here this week.
And the other thing is, this is the second meeting in November.
Yep.
This is the second meeting.
But we didn't have the tentative budget at the first meeting in November.
Again, understand the consequences, if you do not pass the tentative budget and you do not pass the budget performance of the code, then what will happen is you will, you will not have the budget, you'll have last year's budget plus any whatever increases there are as mandated by union contracts. You'll have a budget, but you won't have any input in it.
Right. And what does that do for the tax levy? Same levy as that same rate as that's shared?
No, absolutely not, how can you pay for stuff, all the union contracts that have to be added in statutorily if you don't increase the budget? The budget will be increased by whatever's necessary to conform with all the contracts that you've already entered into.
So the tax levy will be automatically set by the increase in?
Correct, by the la- by the last year's budget, plus all the current contracts, plus any union agreements, plus any, any medical agreements, anything, that's what the charter says.
So what you're saying is, if I'm fleshing this out, the $1.2 million or $1.8 million that we were in deficit last year plus the increases.
Last year's budget.
Last year's budget.
Again, it's.
Last year we balanced the budget.
I don't need to interpret it, read it, it's right in front of you.
But that, no.
You can read what it says.
Last year's budget was in a deficit, we used the, the general fund to balance it. So you're saying that we would automatically raise taxes by the $1.8 million to cover the expenses plus the additional?
The budget would be what last year's budget was, plus whatever obligations you've incurred statutorily or by union.
That doesn't answer my question about the tax rate or the levy.
Where, where's the money going to come from otherwise? Again, I'm not going to argue, look, look at C.
Right, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Look at C and see what it says.
Ginny, can I let Ginny chime in, please?
I just want to remind the council that last week when we had, um, when the scaffolds, including the discussion, we, we said that we needed to give Greg an high drive into the tentative budget. We set up that meeting that the tentative budget was going to be raised tonight and for any changes that were going to, it was going to require a vote instead of doing just whether changes.
Yes, yep, that's not the issue, just to be clear, that, that I'm raising. It's that we received this Sunday night, I work full-time and just speaking for myself here and have a family and general other obligations, and now here we are Tuesday and we're, we're expected to vote on it without any, I mean, we could talk about it tonight, but we didn't have any time to look at this to be able to make suggestions, to be able to make motions, to be able to make changes. We know for sure that we wanted to look at the water rates, I don't know how we can adopt the budget, I mean, I guess if the revenues are projected, then maybe it's fine, but it just seems like we're, I don't know, like our shoes are untied.
Right, well, no, but it's what I said, the council has had all the same information in front of them really since we gave you the, the draft budget back in October. And I've updated you on all of the changes that the council has instructed us to do. So this format that you have in front of you now is just a formal document, but you've all, you've had all of this information from you already and we have discussed all of the changes that have been incorporated and I've written them out memos to you so you can follow all of the decisions that you have been given. So I, I just want to reiterate this, that we had this, it's, it's not, nothing here is a surprise for anybody because I kept you updated on all of the changes for the numbers.
So can you just recap?
Yes, so what is in the tentative budget as a result of last week's meeting is the tax levy is now 300,000 higher than it was last year.
So 5.71, yes.
5.71, right. The police officers are leaving the budget, the health insurance rates were adjusted by the renegotiated, uh, the plan. The BAN interest came down from the original estimate from 240 down to 215. The BAN premium of 21,000 is added to the revenues. The 84,000 was taken out of the budget from last week's meeting, which was reducing the contingency, eliminating the mother plaza of 35,000 and removing the 7,000 from the finance budget and that between those numbers that add up to the 84,000. All of those net changes brought the appropriate fund balance down to the 8.6 that I told
Any, any questions from anybody on, on?
Can I ask, I understand that the mayor's cuff is something that they recently just brought back again, right, it's not that long ago?
No, the mayor's cuff has been done for decades and the mayor's cuff is funded by donations, it has a separate reserve for it.
They haven't, they haven't actually had the mayor's cuff?
Yes, they have the mayor's cuff every year, it's on the, I believe it's on the soon.
I thought there was a few years that we didn't have.
No, we, no, we have it every year, it's just kind of a lot smaller. When the cyclical payments here, it used to be huge.
Huge, yes.
But so the $5,000 though.
That is funded by a district donation.
Just Karen, thank you.
So is everybody generally speaking clear about what they have in front of them?
I guess I'll just reiterate, I still haven't seen the plan on how we're going to reduce the delta between what our known revenues are to our known expenses are.
And I under- I understand that, as I've suggested to the council before, I believe you need to take a slow study approach by raising the tax levy to see what other revenues we can establish between now and the next three years. However, the council has to give us the guidance or give Greg the authority to cut department services. We, we cannot do that on our own, you have to tell us, you want a number of police officers or number of firefighters, we change the SPO by your department or cut and PUP services. We can't do that. We, Greg and I and the department heads went through the budget line by line, item by item, and we cut out 728,000 that we thought we could defer. After that, when we went back to the department heads, it, then it turned into services. So that's why we could not bring anything else forward because we had already cut 728,000. So you give us the guidance of what services you want to cut and. So you give us the guidance of what services you wanna cut, then we'll do it.
And, and I'll reiterate what I had said three hours ago, I think something like that now, is that there is also an option of investing in this city, uh, for the things that we need to do in the short term, with a clear intent, um, of how that investment is likely to be, um, generating, you know, some economic growth and vitality. So, we do have, we do have an unrestricted fund balance of consequence, we are not broke. And the one point eight million dollars that we're looking at, taking, in the moment, taking from the, the, uh, general fund and applying, is going to wind up by virtue of previous precedents, being a much smaller number than the number that we're talking about now, just based on the past several years precedent, am I, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong, because if you look at all previous budgets, except for two, since two thousand twenty, there has been a allocation of fund balance to cover certain expenditures. And then if you look at the actual, every year there was a surplus outside of seven. And, um, and two of the major ones was one because of COVID, and in two thousand nineteen, they invested a major amount of money into equipment that needed to be replaced. Now, I want you to understand, what you decide to make does not stay in stone. In January, we can, we can still continue to discuss doing our cut services, you know, what else can we change? So I don't want you to think that this is a document that cannot be changed after it's, after it is about, because you can make changes as time goes on. You can look at things and say, look, maybe we found a more efficient way to do something, so we can reduce this expenditure in the future because of this. Or we found a revenue source, so we can, we can reduce the allocated fund balance because we now have a revenue source. For example, if we, uh, go back to the city, Nite Town is really pressuring the government to make the state aid increase permanently. So if we get that, that's gonna be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is equivalent to a five percent tax increase. So if we get that, that will reduce what we have to allocate fund balance. So, I, I don't want you to think that you don't have time to make changes in the future.
Yeah, so we have time to.
With all that being said, you gotta pass the budget, you gotta pass the tax levy.
Yes, 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 Dave. Yes, Dave, thank you. Uh, so that said, we can make cuts in January, we can make cuts in February. We can also determine that there are things that we want us to access our general fund for, uh, our unrestricted funds for, for the purposes of investment.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I stress this a number of times in the meeting, two thousand twenty-four, I repeated again, two thousand twenty-four, the general fund total budget went up one point six million, one point three of course for public safety. We all know that nobody wants to cut police and fire services, that's why we've gotta figure out how we're gonna fund it. That's just my, that's my assumption, because that is where the money sits, public safety is over fifty percent of the general fund budget. That's where the good dollars are, so we just need to figure out how we're going to close the delta as, as money says. That's why I'd like for the council to develop a three-year plan of slowly increasing the tax levy to be where it should be. I've given you lots of charts of where the tax levy was percentage-wise in the total budget through two thousand eleven. It was about thirty-six percent from the revenue base, it's now down to twenty-one percent. And it's gonna keep getting smaller as the budget increases, and that, that's not a healthy proportion. And when all of us say, the cost of living, things like that, things are going up ten, fifteen percent, right? But when the tax levy only goes up two percent, there's no way you're gonna fill that gap when your costs are going up this much and your revenue sources are going up this much. It's just, it's just, it's just the reality of man. So trust me, I understand how difficult it is to try to balance the services that you wanna provide to the community and also to fund them. That's why give yourself time to see what other sources can happen. And, you know, for example, Fire Chief's talking about maybe contracted services for transports. We don't know, we've been trying to get that contract settled for five seconds, we haven't gotten through yet. Maybe we will, we just don't know in time.
Right, so.
We're looking at bed tags, we're looking at bed tax possibilities. I don't, I don't have the information that's presented to council, but at quick math estimate, we're thinking maybe three hundred thousand dollars. But I don't know that yet, nor do I want anybody to run with that number, because I don't know if it's valid.
That, that, that's right, so again, just to reiterate the point, that there, between now and halfway down twenty twenty-five, we're likely to see that we've identified either new funding sources or, or surprises in some of our more conservative estimates around our costs. And that's, and so the number that we're looking at here is, is in wet cement, if anything.
Yeah, it, it is, it is a plan to start, it doesn't really, you know.
Just the levy is real, I mean, that's, like, once we knew that, that's what it is.
Yes, yes, but you, but we have, we've all agreed that we need to go over for the tax cap formula, and speaking of that, Ginny, I wanted to update you on the tax cap formula. Over the weekend, when I was working on the budget, I went into the, um, uh, state controlled office website, 'cause I have to file the tax limit form, so the state knows where we are on our tax limit, I also have to file the tax cap. When I went to file the tax cap, they had changed the form, and they gave us extra money towards the police and fire retirement, by about, I wanna say twenty-nine thousand dollars, so, but let me find my note. So I called today to confirm when they changed, and she goes, oh, we just recently done that. And I said, did you send out a notice? And she said, no. And I said, well, I'm glad that I went on through website to find out. But, um, so, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just, oh, I'm a little bit, um. So the tax cap, the tax cap now is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred. Um, so we got, oh, it wasn't twenty-nine thousand, it was twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars that we're giving us towards the police and fire retirement. And I also want you to keep this in proportion, right, police and fire retirement went up almost seventeen percent, but they're only giving us twenty-one thousand towards it. But it's, if we go to the, at least to the cap, that what we're hoping when it exceeded this year, that's twenty-one thousand every year for, for whatever. So, um, so I just wanted to inform you that they did modify the formula. Which I found out soon.
So, just kinda bouncing around here a little bit, Ginny. When could you have the water rates to the council?
I can read you the map, and I, I can send out stuff to you tomorrow, um, because I did work on that for a long time, also Greg worked on it with me for a long time. And he recalculated every step, and I actually took the monthly users and recalculated all of their twenty-two thousand twenty K bills to see where the increases would be, but I felt that the one percent per step was just way too high. And it really increased, especially soon as water bill extraordinary and heartbreaks. And I just felt it was unfair to go that high on the top, you know.
But you can get that map to us tomorrow?
Yeah, I think I can get it, probably by the, well, wait a minute, not tomorrow, probably the next day, I've got several meetings tomorrow, so probably, um, by Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, wait a minute, Tuesday's what?
Tuesday, you're, you're fine.
Thursday, I understand, all my days are gone, so I think it's.
Thursday, Thursday?
Yeah, probably late Thursday, um, we'll give you some time to do the map. And, and what I'll do is I, you know the report that I give you after the annual bill is done? And I show you the different numbers and the different customers by level, I can reconstruct that, um, so you can see exactly where the money's at.
That'll be helpful.
So, hearing what you're saying, if, if we, you were to give us a couple of suggestions, the one that, um, council member, Lopari Shu gave, I'd like to see that, but I'd also like to see if you flattened it, say, maybe after the, the eight percent? And, and see what kind of revenue would be generated off of that.
And doing this, uh, if you, if, if we approve the tentative budget, we'll probably have to do a budget transfer for two thousand twenty-five, just so I can redistribute the revenue between the colleges and the, um, all the other user, because they separate revenue codes for those. We just need to move the money between the two accounts.
And I also just need clarity, 'cause I, I listened to what David was just saying, when he was communicating with, um, council member, member of Lopari Shu. From your perspective, if the budget was to be, um, rejected tonight? I understand about the bonds, I've read all that language when you handed it up to us, but going above the, the tax levy rate? Kinda walk me through that, because I, I don't think you legally can. You would take more money from our unrestricted fund balance, right?
That's what I.
Correct. So I just wanted that clear.
Where you would, where you would be mandated if you did not raise your, where you would be mandated in raising the tax levy would be to meet your bond payments.
Correct.
We will meet all of that.
Correct, that's in that language that you hand to us every time we do it, right, I got that. But not for the general fund?
No, I, I, I will research it some more, I will confirm with David. The way I understand it, if the budget fails, it's last year's budget, plus any mandated.
Financial commitments.
Commitments, but what that restricts you to is you're not allowed to raise your revenue codes except your allocation fund balance, which would make your allocation fund balance huge. Because, because you gotta remember, we, we added over seven hundred thousand of other revenues.
Right. And from reserves.
No, no, just from other revenues, we raised sales tax, we raised ambulance revenues, we raised the, all, all of those things.
Oh, gotcha, right.
Right, we, we gained that much back, yes.
But it does say that you can't include, if you, in the charter, it says that if it's, um, rejected, that you can't. Yeah, like, you can't, um, what does it say?
Include funded by res- any, it says to eliminate any expenditures funded by reserves, which I don't believe is fund balance,
Yes. Right.
But it's like the public safety reserve or something like that, you, if there was some expenditure in the twenty twenty-four budget
Right.
that was to be funded from one of our restricted reserves, that expenditure wouldn't be included in twenty twenty-five budget, nor would the reserve.
You couldn't carry that forward. Right.
Obviously, the council can authorize use of reserves anytime.
Right. Okay.
So, Mark, at our last meeting, we couldn't be there, um, we can kinda talk a little bit, maybe afterwards, we talk more about forming a committee, you know, how you like to form committees, that maybe we would have a few council members work on this, because we started going through this fifteen-page document that Ginny gave us, but we really didn't flush all of this out. And I think maybe, instead of throwing it down on finance, since they have a lot on their agenda, that maybe there's just a volunteer.
It's, it's something, yeah, it's, it's something to look at, and I will, um, maybe we can have a little bit more conversation, uh, about the mechanics of that.
Right, so it could be a combination of maybe a few of the staff and some of the council.
It, it could be, so, yeah, again, um, let me have a conversation with you and whomever else on the other side of things, and.
Can I just give you some history on that?
Yes.
Um, before the city man, before, before the very first city manager.
Yes.
We used to have what was called a budget committee, and four council members were assigned to it.
Mm-hmm.
We used to have budget meetings with every department head. In those budget meetings, some of them would last until midnight, but we went over every line of the request. So four of the council members would have a full understanding of the budget before it got presented to the board council. So that, that was the way it was done for a very long time.
And that's a very interesting option.
I'm just suggesting maybe something would be started in January. Because I'm, I'm at a crossroads here, of whether I say no to this budget or say yes to this budget, but I would like to see, for me, I would like to see a hiring freeze. Until we fully understand what we can and cannot do, um, for me, I'd like to see us enter into a, a hiring freeze. I, I can make a motion that I would like to enter into a hiring freeze. Do I have a second on that? Tom? Discussion?
I, sorry.
Hang on, say, hey, hey, hey.
I would like to see a list of the positions that are open right now that we would be freezing. Think that, that I like to have full information where I.
I'm looking at page eight of the document.
The.
But we knew that that was not what, the fifteen-page document?
Right.
I'm looking at page eight.
Yeah, Plan, Plan B was never something that we hoped anybody would take, you know, seriously as legitimate cuts, they were the worst-case scenario cuts.
The point, I mean, that's the point of the whole document, is that like.
Did you just say that it wasn't even, okay.
Yeah, like, we asked for that, and so to say, like, well, it's kind of a flip thing, that we hope nobody would ever take seriously, like, but we asked.
Right, exactly. Well, some of those things we impact.
Like, we asked for a list of.
Dog licensing and impact, for instance.
Sorry, right, 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 right.
Which is exactly what we were saying to you about that dog, okay, I'm gonna be quiet.
Um, so anyway, so at the meeting, we were told that those positions, that some of those positions had already been hired, so I don't think that's like a current list.
Right, the document was made October twenty-second, and we got seven days later, and yes, there were some human beings in there.
Right, because the city keeps functioning.
So I just wanna know, like, what's, all of that being equal, I just wanna know, like, what's, what's open now, what would we be agreeing to?
Well, I don't, I don't think we have enough information to go ahead with a, a motion like this, and I think we have departments that are in great need of hiring now and already, you know, before us, and I, I, I'm, I'm curious, you know, um, I, I just, I, I don't see a justification for this at this time.
So, so you, you're nodding your head?
Oh, I, I would concur, I just, you know, after all of our discussions and the agreement that we came to in our last meeting, this hiring freeze seems like out of the field, and I don't understand it. Totally unnecessary and, um, not justified, from what I can see from the evidence, from the evidence that's been presented.
And I know Chris was eager to, to insert, um, an opinion, and I'm looking.
I just wanna say that you guys are putting us in a very precarious situation by putting a hiring freeze on. Right now, I'm a maintenance worker down on my building, a ground screw, I have a very difficult time cleaning our facility because of that, um, reduction. Um, we had to terminate someone recently on a wastewater treatment plant, I have to hire a new position. And if you do a hiring freeze, my guy at the wastewater treatment plant are gonna be behind, so like, retirements, we're not gonna fill retirements, we're not gonna fill terminations and things like that, and that really puts us in a tough, tough spot.
The city continues to need to function.
Again, I.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, again, I just think the best way to continue to provide the services that the city needs and support the current staff that we have. Like, one of the things that we talked about in our, um, strategic plan is retention, okay? The best way to retain people is to show them that they are valued and to support them. And that includes providing adequate staffing support in their offices for the positions and the jobs that they are given. And, and then that will also help fulfill the requests that this council brings to those staff. So I, I really can't, in any good conscience, see any reason for a hiring freeze at this time.
Further discussion on this motion?
So, again, it sounds like a broken record, but in order to fix the delta, it's one point eight million dollars, that means you gotta go to thirty-four percent tax levy rate, is that where you wanna go? You're shaking your head in confusion, it's in the documents that says thirty, thirty-four percent is what you gotta get.
No, no, I'm saying no, I'm shaking my head to say no, I would like.
Let's, one at a time.
So whether you do it in a year or five years, that's what we're talking about. How do you control your costs then? The unions will get a two to three percent, I haven't seen their contracts, but they always get a two to three percent increase, that's what you're gonna keep getting. Your legacy costs are gonna keep going, our revenue costs have been dropping. I, I just don't, I don't understand the blindness of this.
All right, Elaine.
Yeah, we, we worked really hard on the budget, and we're at this point where it is later in the budget season because of all of the hard work that we've put into this, and that includes investing in our staff and filling those positions that are needed.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? Yes, Katie?
Could this be something that is discussed by a committee that would be looking at ways to, like, reduce costs?
So, this is, again, I think what Lynn was just asking me about? Yes, so I, again, I think, um, there's a. Yes, so I again, I think um there's a conversation that I'll have with a couple of council members who have had this discussion among themselves and see whether or not there's something we can do.
I, yeah, I think rather than doing it right here in this moment, although I understand that you would like assurance, because this is how I feel about the water rates. Like, I don't really wanna go over the tax cap until I know what the water rate situation is. Um, I, but I think it's something that that could potentially be, like, unless we run out and hire, which I know is impossible, so, unless you have a budget want, Dave. Um, but unless we run out and hire everyone before the end of the year, you know, it's something that we could talk about in committee in January and, you know, get more information on and be more thoughtful about. And have a list, a real list, that doesn't have people employed on it and um maybe discuss it then. I don't know, that would be my middle ground suggestion.
So I'm so I I've offered, I'll I'll sit down with a couple of you folks that have been talking about this and we'll see what um what makes sense. Uh, and if if it makes sense, and then we'll we'll pursue that. So that'll take at least some of the pressure off you're trying to make decisions in this moment where you frankly, you know, I mean, we are right up against it.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is the thing that I say a lot, which is that, and I appreciate Jenny, you giving us the the kind of throwback to, you know, people really being invested in this. And and being able to have discussions at the beginning of the year of what we might do toward the end of the year allows us to consider bigger concepts um in more thoughtful ways. And so I I really genuinely hope that that happens, because I think that um things can be more successful um when we have information as soon as possible, so that we can absorb it and understand it and feel connected to it.
And 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 the and the time in the calendar to be able to plan.
Right, yeah, totally.
Alright, um, so I wanna just wrap up, do we have further discussion on this and?
Oh, wait, motion.
I just wanna say that I would also support starting the budget planning, you know, earlier in the year, you know, this is my first time going around with the budget, you know, and it was a lot of work. So I think, you know, if we spread that out more, you know, and, you know, look at some of those like revenue sources and different things that we started talking about, I think, you know, that would be great, doing that earlier in the year. And I know even last week when we were talking about that, I made myself a note, you know, to remember that in January, so.
So, um, though we have a we have a motion on the floor, um, which is to implement a hiring freeze um that is not not specific to, can you can you just kind of um flush that out a little bit?
I'm suggesting we do a hiring freeze until we understand. And formulate a plan. That recognizes that our legacy costs are exceeding our revenue costs. Everything else is defined, but the legacy costs are just gonna keep telling us.
Alright, so that's.
And so the suggestions that Jenny gave earlier, yes, they can all be flushed out, but until then, those ideas gotta be formalized. We we talk about it and then we get so busy that they get to the side and then here we are again.
So Jenny, short case, please.
I just, I understand your concerns, um, and and I respect your views and I respect your concern in every direction. Um, but I just wanna, I'm just gonna talk about the finance department, because now you know that I'm down, I come off as person, I'm also down the account, I drive down for about twelve hours a week. And I just want to forward you, you know, the work schedule that I'm bringing. If the finance office fails, it's going to have severe consequences, not only for every department in the city, but for the city as a whole. And we are trying really hard to get everything that's gonna get done, tax collection starts in January, and I have nobody in the front office to do that tax collection. And so I ju- I just want you to understand, if you decide to put the hiring freeze on, what it's going to do to my department.
Thank you, Jenny. So, and I don't have a vote here, um, but I'll just let this council know that I absolutely am with Chris and with Jenny and with Elaine, and I suspect also with Cecilia. Uh, on the um on the notion of um our staffing levels being kept at a place where frankly, we're at risk in certain departments. And um I don't have a vote, I would like to have this conversation um moved to a place where we can have a a vote of council. Um, and um, do we have any more discussion on the topic? Yes, Cecilia?
I just would like to point out, because we have been beaten to death with the um the adage that we have no plan. And I would like to counter with that we have a plan. We spent weeks out of our summer talking about a strategic plan. In no way, shape, or form did that plan say anything about hiring freeze. And in fact, the plan outlined the capacity to grow the organization, not to shrink it, not to starve it, but in fact, to expand it. So I vehemently oppose, and I would like to make that public, I vehemently oppose a hiring freeze because our strategic plan that we all agreed on, that we came and took time away from beautiful summer evenings to discuss, did not include anything. It gave us a roadmap for expansion and for capacity building. And so I vehemently oppose hiring freeze, I think it is misguided and it does not lend itself to what the evidence is telling us. Which is, we have the capacity, we have the capacity to grow our revenue streams, and the plan that we have developed over the past few weeks, I think, is reasonable for allowing those revenue streams to grow.
That's it, do we have anybody else uh who wants to add to the discussion before we vote?
Well, I'll counter that.
You you have countered it, like, over and over.
No, I'll 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 counter the fact that of your plan that we spent, and the first paragraph of the strategic plan says we will have a balanced budget.
That's not a counter to what I'm saying.
If you don't understand the fact of having a balanced budget, then you're right.
That's not a counter to what I just, in fact, it supports what I'm arguing.
You were talking about the strategic plan.
It supports precisely what I just said.
Within the document.
We'll do one at a ti- we'll do one at a time.
You're referencing says a balanced budget.
Thank you for supporting what I just said, I appreciate it.
And do we have any further discussion?
I just wanna point out that last week I was told not to tell somebody else what they understand or don't understand, so I think that that's just something that we should all stick to.
I appreciate that, um, Elaine, do we have any further discussion? Please take the vote.
Councilmember Roger Campoli?
No.
Councilmember Walruso?
No.
Councilmember McHugh?
No.
Councilmember Leparyshu?
No.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington? Councilmember Rappis?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, are there any other motions to be made relative to the budget that's been put in front of us? Addition, subtraction?
The one that you want, that we still have, I just wanna make sure, I wanna do it.
Don't worry, I'm.
Whatever it is, I don't know what it is.
Oh, it's it's.
Don't worry, we're all waiting.
I don't think it matters if we do it now or if we do it, it matters, I don't know.
I don't even know, but yeah, what are we talking about?
What is happening?
The citizens say you make a motion or whatever your motion you want.
The mayor has asked me to make a motion related to the budget, and I don't understand exactly why it comes before or after we vote on the budget, that that's what I'm trying to clarify. I don't wanna miss, I promised the mayor.
There's a tentative, if the tentative budget is in front of you, if the modifications could be made by majority vote at this time, and you wanna make a modification of the tentative budget, you need to do it now.
Okay.
Again, it's it's in the charter, if you read the paragraph in the charter, you can see what the process is.
So.
Charter is section forty six, read the paragraph, then you'll know.
Um, Mayor Drennic has asked me to introduce a motion uh that the common council approves an amendment to the twenty twenty five tentative budget by increasing by twenty, by thirty five thousand dollars of money for Muller Plaza.
Do I have a um?
Wait a second, you asked that man to make a motion for that, for your project?
It's um.
Well, I I.
It's a city project.
I'll I'll respond, uh, what the mayor told me.
We have a second to the.
Hold on, that's a.
Wait, wait, hang on, folks, 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 we need we need a second before we have any discussion, I have a second from Elaine.
I need it here. Need it here. I triple.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
We have a, so it's Dawn followed by Elaine.
Mayor Drennic.
Let's listen.
We we.
Mayor Drennic has asked me to introduce a motion, he told me that he is not able to, and I said I would do that.
You've had an eventful week, haven't you?
Shannon, you're out of order.
How? But you have.
Shannon, you're out of order.
Additional, yes, and I think we should, um, so this is, just to be clear, point of order, this needs five votes?
That's correct.
To pass, okay. I I would like to call a vote.
Call a vote?
Call a vote?
Has there been discussion?
Uh, apparently, oh, is there any further discussion?
Can't call a vote, you're looking at discussion.
Is there any discussion? In this lack of discussion, I will just um make it clear that the um fortunes of our downtown merchants, especially during the summer, especially as we're gonna be putting in a roundabout, especially as they have had a um summer that followed this past where they're down twenty to thirty to forty percent, and we'd like to keep them in business. Requires that we bring people into the city of Oneonta, that's part of the the strategy that they have all bought into, uh, and it's place making. And um we just literally had a meeting, I think you were there, at Keno, in which they all subscribed to the idea of that's what they want to do and that's what they need to do. But that's what I have to say on the subject, go ahead, Katie.
Yes, be that as it may. If they were down twenty to thirty percent, so we haven't been given numbers about the downtown Renaissance, we call that as a market. If they were down to twenty to thirty percent this summer, I I don't see why we would reinvest that same money to something that didn't work last summer. Uh, we may have construction of a stage in Muller Plaza, there's too many unknowns. Uh, I'm kind of flabbergasted and I would like to vote as soon as practicable.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call the vote.
Councilmember Roger Campoli?
Yes.
Councilmember Walruso?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
No.
Councilmember Leparyshu?
Absolutely not.
Councilmember Carson?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Rappis?
Yes.
Okay, um, are there any other additions, deletions, subtractions, or modifications of the budget that the council would like to introduce as motions? Right. I don't believe that, have I um read the motion for the, no, so I think we should probably do that and then um and then vote. Motion that the common council, this is twenty, motion that the common council approves the twenty twenty five tentative budget as presented for a public hearing to be held at a special meeting of the common council to be scheduled for November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four at six P M. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Followed by? Do I have a second, second by Cecilia? Further discussion?
Yes, I remember what I was gonna say, we invested in downtown by hiring fewer police officers.
Yes, Katie? Sure.
I'm not comfortable voting to go over the tax cap without confirmation of whether or not the water rate can be adjusted in a way that is um different and still equitable, and so I just can't just do that.
Jenny, please.
I will neither make any progress, I just want to make sure, please, I just want to make sure that we will be protected, um, any accusations are targeted.
I can't. Anybody can allege anything. I cannot guarantee you what a court will do if we're challenged by a basis that that that's being targeted against nonprofits or against large organizations until the allegation is made, and I'll have to defend the act of whatever the council takes. Again, you you're asking me to predict the future, I can't do that, all I can tell you is, it's constitutional if if the if the rate changes are in order to encourage conservation. I can tell you that it's unconstitutional if you're targeting other people because because you think that they can pay more money. That's, then is the rules, you can tell me how a judge is gonna determine, only after it happens, they will look at it and see what the rational basis is, see what the discussion was, see what the plan was, and then they'll make a determination as to whether it's the case.
Right, and on more than one occasion, we've said that because we've had this conversation to try to suss out whether or not we feel like we're being unfair, unjust, uh, inequitable.
Uneven protection, that's.
Yes, that that does in some way protect us against an accusation.
And so did the discussion, it said, well, let's see what we can add to all of the uh all of all of the untaxed entities so we can raise the taxes on them as opposed to the taxpayers, that's in the record as well.
Right.
So tell me what that indicates for a court, when they read the transcripts.
Right.
So I have a suggestion, if I recalculate the water bills at five dollars a minimum, but then I treat everybody the same as tax, to make up for that over twenty thousand dollars.
Meaning.
So so instead of doing a percent to percent, you you're not doing, you know, whatever your suggestion is, there are percentage, I use to treat everybody the same. And then um see what that may have works out.
Yeah.
Because I physically, I mean physically feel more comfortable treating everybody under this structure, this with the same increase.
Meaning.
Um, and let me do that now, I would, but I.
But the thing I don't understand is if we're determining what people pay by their water consumption alone, and the groups of consumers, the tiers of consumers contain both fully taxable and non-taxable entities, then I can't see how we're targeting any specific group other than high water users. And I don't see how that supports anything other than water conservation. I'm not an attorney, no.
You're you're, no, but you're a legislator, what you deter- what you determine is what's gonna be determined. If you don't think it has any impact, then then vote for it, but again, if you don't think it can be argued by the people who are gonna be charged, then it's then it's not, they're only, they're being charged equally to their own.
I think it can be argued, but I think it could be uh very expertly countered by our.
Flattery will get you nowhere.
I'm just saying, I, we have a very experienced representative in that situation.
Elaine.
Yeah, but I hear the point that he's making, and that did come up, and that was like a starting point, and then.
That's what we've been trying to do since nineteen eighty.
Well, I'm, I'm finished, okay, that it was a starting point of the conversation, and I I.
That's wasn't the starting point of the conversation, I don't wanna be, but that's fine, because I don't wanna be mischaracterized by saying that that was my intention.
But I'm not gonna continue any if I don't get to.
That's not what I'm saying, Katie, I haven't even finished.
I I understand, so Katie, so what I can do is I can do the minimum at five dollars, and then I can adjust the steps to make it equally distributed among the steps. And and I think that will, I would, I would.
So are you saying a rate of eight percent among the steps, I'm decreasing that?
Yeah.
I, that's not what I'm asking, and I, maybe people don't wanna see that, but that's not what I wanna see. I I think that if the idea is to encourage people to conserve water, then there should be an incentive for conserving water, and right now there isn't.
Elaine.
I don't disagree on that point, I do wanna see water conservation, I'm not pointing a finger at you when I'm talking about how the council's conversation did start off at a point where we were talking about is there a way to charge tech properties that are not taxed more money, that did come up, it it did come up.
No. It did come up.
It did come up, that's all I'm saying, is that it came up, and then somewhere from that point, we, you know, it jumped to that, so.
Yes, I can tell you exactly where it jumps.
I'm not, I'm not saying that they are, I, again, I just wanna touch.
Let's take one at a time, please.
I'm not saying that they're connected, I'm just saying that I see his point because both things were said, that's all.
Yeah, but that has been said, my point is that has been said by councils who who included my parents. Um, the the, what I'm saying is, we were talking about.
Only I am here to to address.
To validate, to validate that. The the point that I was making, where this came from for the courts, is that we were talking about raising taxes and how that impacts some of our lowest income families and taxpayers, and how.
And how can we provide relief in other areas without challenging our revenue? It's not a penalty, it's an incentive. It was entirely based on that. And not about getting other organizations to pay more. But I, I just, I feel like it's been mischaracterized, I feel like it started when you told me that it was legal, we had asked for math, and rather than giving math on the day that it was promised, there was a legal opinion thrown in, and I always value your opinion, but it's not what was asked for in that moment. And I think that we're continuing the mischaracterization by the way that you presented the water rates, and I think now it's being upheld as a mischaracterization by my colleagues on council. And I think that it's really frustrating that new ideas are shot down out of fear or discomfort when they may be legal, and I think that we need to look at everything. I mean, for God's sake, we did spend a million summer evenings, all of our fall evenings, to try to get ourselves out of this predicament.
It sounds like we can keep working on it, too. So.
Not once we vote.
Ginny.
On the tax rate, it's done.
Let me recognize Ginny, please.
And just so you know, last week when I, when I told you that yes, we could do the math, but I also told the council that I would confirm with the city of China to make sure what I was doing was legally supportable. I did say that last week, and that was the first thing I did, is I contacted David and said, can this concept, can I do this legally? Or will it be perceived as being targeted? And I gave you his message back to me, I shared that with you, and I did do the math. I spent hours on doing the math, but because the numbers were so extreme, extreme for the very large users, I, I, which I said, I emailed my email to you, I, I, I didn't think it was supportable because it was a huge increase. It was like a twenty-six percent increase for ecologists. So.
But it's not just the ecologists. To be clear, that's your, that's who you're mentioning, but that's not who we're targeting.
But.
But I think you need to be clear in your language. Thank you.
So, but.
Yes, Scott. I think we are in fact going to vote pretty soon, I would hope we, if we can avoid taking another break, that'd be, that'd be great, actually. So Katie, you're.
Well, I wanna be clear that I only want to vote yes on this budget if we find a way to redistribute the water rates. Because I think that our our residents, our average residents are really having a hard time. And I don't feel that assurance can be made for that, which is fair. But I think that that puts me, maybe only me, in a really hard spot.
Further discussion on Katie's point?
I think she's been very valid, she's argued and debated very well tonight. I commend her for standing up on her values. I would like to see the math, but I would also like to see it flattened out. Just recognizing the percentages and the compound interest on the percentages.
And we're looking at basically forty-eight hours for you to be able to pull something together, give or take.
I believe I can do it, too, probably late Thursday afternoon, tomorrow my schedule's. But, but I do believe that we can make the math work, but I just want clear direction. Am I also, do I just give you the minimum at five dollars? And am I, the second step, is that going to have an increase, or is the first two steps not going to have an increase?
I think they should, I think all steps should have an increase, what I'm asking for is for that to grow as the table goes.
So I, probably what I'm going to do, just so you know, instead of doing percentage increases, I'm going to look at the cents per gallon, and make it logical as it goes up. And that way, that way I can defend that logic and the good itself. Instead of just saying, oh, I just, I, I increase this person eight percent, or I increase this person twelve percent. I can't defend that, what I can defend is a logic of, of a, a cent change. You know how I say, instead of talking percentages, we're talking about dollars, right, but I want to take that concept in the pocket to the pants.
If you can make it work, that's why we pay the big bucks. Thank you, Ginny, you're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, I'll, one more time go around, if there are any additions, any subtractions, any other modifications of the budget that we have in, in front of us, and if not, are we willing to vote? Hearing none, yeah, go ahead, Sis.
Well, I just wanted to just revisit Katie's point, which is, you mentioned, and I don't know, maybe this is, you know, going over something I've already gone over, but you mentioned being mischaracterized, I was wondering, can you mischaracterize your argument? And I think you did, and I think, I think I have some clarity.
Okay.
It just wasn't clear in terms of how you felt you were mischaracterized versus what you felt, actually characterized your position at this point.
Yeah, so I feel like the mischaracterization is saying that this is um, something that is targeted at specific users. Yes. Whereas the the idea to increase the rate as it goes up the table, I think encourages consol, conservation, obviously there's only so much conservation that can be done with those larger users, there's a reason that they're larger users, but I think that it's something to think about in terms of, you know, being in people's minds. Um, but then also I think that it shifts some of the, um, burden from, you know, Ginny, you said that the bulk of our users, ninety-seven percent of our users are in the first three steps or something. And so this allows us to raise the water revenue that we need while giving some relief to the largest percentage of our residents.
Dylan.
Yeah, just to make sure that my point was clear, I, I, like I said, I do support the idea of, you know, some way of reducing, you know, the highest consumption of water, and, you know, what I said was just that I think we should be aware, you know, of that, the point that David made, you know, it was not something that I was aware of, and I wanted us to understand that, you know, how that might impact that discussion, it was not directed at you.
I also wanted to make counsel, by the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, we're hoping to have the restructured rates to present to council, and it's going to be separate, there is going to be a base rate for what I call the infrastructure of bringing the water to and from the residents. Then there will be a rate for water usage itself. So the bill will be composed of two components. And then, Waterware, they said that our rate table is too big, they said nine steps is too large. They said we really probably should cut it down to about three. But that is when we want to separate the, the infrastructure charge versus the usage charge. So once we, we have time, I wish I already had that done, but as you know, I, I don't have my partner. So I have to, I just haven't been able to juggle everything, and in the timeline, it's a little bit, because I can just get so much done.
Thank you, Jenny.
But, so that is coming.
Yeah, yeah, so this is like one year, a temporary situation, yeah.
There was also a conversation about charging, having the payments multiple times a year, whether.
If, if we go to quarterly billing, yes, if we go to quarterly billing, which will be, but I also want you to understand the effect that's going to have on the finance department, because that's gonna triple, that's gonna triple our workload, because we're going to be collecting four times a year instead of once a year. And I'm hoping with the type of technology, a lot of that will become electronic, we'll be able to, to give the consumer, to give us electronic permission to email them their bills, so we won't have to print and mail them, that will save a lot of money.
Yeah, I maybe have some offline questions about the software that we're using, because that seems like really wild that that's not an option now. I mean, I guess, I mean, municipalities is a lot of customers, you know, but I mean, even none too, like pulling automatic payments for payroll and things, it seems like it would be pretty, pretty straightforward, so I'm just curious.
Right, so you'll have a conversation at a time in a different place.
Yeah, 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 I'll nerd out another time, yeah.
So, for the purposes of our, finding our way to the end of this motion, are, is there any further discussion? We should take the vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Yes.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Yes.
Councilmember McHugh?
Yes.
Councilmember LaParrishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
This sucks. Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
No.
It passes.
Okay.
So it just passed? The budget.
The budget.
Tentative budget. It did? Tentative. You put more shots than we are.
Stop the person.
Oh, gosh. Are there two more minutes?
Additional business council consideration?
Uh, I wanna say something really quickly, we, so for this deal, this happened so long ago, but we focused on this, we got a bunch of feedback from employees, a lot of people don't wanna see change, and I understand that change is tough. I appreciate everyone's feedback, though, and so we're gonna take their feedback, we have four people who said that they would really believe to, like, serve on the committee to help pick, so I'm gonna have to try to find a way to vet, like, who's gonna do that, or who's gonna be the person to go beyond the committee, but, so, we're gonna have next steps. So the employee survey is over, and we're gonna be moving forward, I just wanted to give an update, we have not spoken about it. And also for, huh?
Thank you.
Oh, oh, also for Human Rights Commission, because we haven't talked about that in a while. Lynn is gonna be leaving, and I believe Bryce is gonna be.
Oh, sweet.
He's not responded to me yet, so I don't know that for sure.
Oh, we can talk about that.
Have we anything else for, yes, Katie?
Yeah, I have a few things. One, I'd like to thank Chrissy Arpauchi and Brian Mapp, because tonight you both presented things that were in the spirit of moving our city forward in a way that supports your department, but also keeps in mind where we are financially. And I think that you both, over the past year, I've seen, do like so much work to try to, like, make ends meet and make things good for your department and your staff, so I just wanna call that out. So, the other thing is, I wanted to ask about the wintertime, it may never snow here ever again, but.
This Friday, we're gonna get about twelve inches, so.
Okay, perfect, so we need to hustle, because this is my thing, I wanted to ask what people thought about, like, a little campaign in our community. One of the things we had talked about was like naming a snowplow, and like tracking the snowplow. We should, I wanna do that this year.
That's you.
You're doing it?
Yes.
Can we?
Yeah, the other thing is.
Well, I have to ask my boss, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we're gonna try.
I think it was Greg's idea, so.
It was, but I still.
I stole it from Scott.
I know, but like, you gotta be on board, right?
You don't wanna hear what I have to say now, so, as you might expect, there would be a cost associated with naming the plow, like actually putting it on the side of it.
Oh.
I'm not saying, I don't know what that cost is today, but given there's concerns about costs.
I know people with trickets, and I feel like we could figure it out, donation style.
All right, so, 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 this sounds like it's going to happen.
Yeah, and so the other thing I wanted to mention, and it's something that I stole from a different place, and it's actually something we kinda talked about, I think maybe last year, but then I saw it again this year with a sort of a different twist, which is, like, adopting, so there's a community that asks people to adopt a catch basin, and like, keep it clean of debris, which I think would be like a good, maybe long-term, maybe next year kind of situation. But I also thought about adopting fire hydrants during the winter, and I'm assuming that we have like G I S maps of like where all the fire hydrants are, and we might be able to do some sort of, what?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, right, we know exactly where they are, and so, we might be able to get people to kind of sign up to adopt, to shovel out fire hydrants so that they're accessible for the fire department, and I wanna try to make that happen as well.
Good idea.
Okay, cool.
Chris, you had something?
I think our sign machine can make whatever lottery we want to put on our vehicles, but I believe all our numbers that we have, we make them, that's what Charlie uses to put on our vehicles, I think.
So it'll be minimal cost.
We just need like a survey monkey, or whatever.
Okay, so.
Yeah, totally, yes, oh my gosh, yes, okay, we're very excited now.
So now, is there any need for an executive session?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I wasn't finished.
Oh, you have more?
Additional business, I would like to just quickly, I don't know how quick it's gonna be, I can't control that, re-surface, well, I might not be the only person who speaks, but resurface in what Shannon was wanting to discuss during the motion about the Mueller Plaza thing. I think, and I know that you, Mayor, I'm speaking to you, don't really want to hear this, but I think that it needs to be said, that I think that the video that you put out has, is sort of a new low in a string of really inappropriate communications. I, it was, I, I was flabbergasted, I showed a lot of restraint, I think. When I listened to it, it was shared to me by a bunch of people who said, have you seen this? But I think placing the blame on Bryce, while it may have been inadvertent, it was clear. And I think that Carolyn, while you apologized today, was like basically publicly slandered. And I, it's completely unacceptable behavior from a mayor, from the highest office in our community. And again, you may not wanna receive this, but it's important, I think that it is said, so.
I appreciate your opinion, I, sorry, but I don't agree with it, I did take down the video when I learned that Bryce's time in the spotlight was uncomfortable for him and his wife, and as soon as I became aware of that, I took that down. But the, the details in the video were accurate, and they were a culmination of any number of things, including the machinations of council last Tuesday, which, none of which I want to be having a discussion with anybody about right now. I appreciate your opinion, I don't agree with your opinion, I did apologize personally to Bryce for dragging him, now that he's a private citizen, back into the spotlight, doesn't change the, the, the various moments in that timeline, or the various things that I dealt with in those moments as best as I could, and very little bit do I second guess. This is something that a lot of people were not aware of, I felt it needed to be shared with people, but it was not as important that it stayed out there with a consequence of somebody feeling uncomfortable or, or worse, and so I pulled that down and apologized to Bryce for having to put that through that. Now, this is on me, this is, I don't believe council consideration. I appreciate your opinion, I do, but I don't agree with it, and unless there is something else, and again, I have things that I will talk with council members about relative to last Tuesday, or not, but certainly not right now, not in this moment. With that, if there is anything else, then we're gonna call this adjourned.
What is an apology? Did you apologize today publicly for Bryce, that's a mask thing.
Yes, in fact, yes, and.
Okay, you, wait, I'm sorry, so if you are saying.
Shannon, I'm sorry, but you are not my guardian angel, and I don't need a therapist right now, and we are adjourned.
You're not, what I ask is if you apologize.